Isn't this great, it's really great doing this with the street.
I just read it.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Ledger Town Council to orders. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Russi?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Here.
Mr. Song?
Here.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Here.
Nine here, zero out.
Are there any residents or property owners that wish to address the council at this time?
Mr. Raleo, how are you, sir?
Good.
On the council? It's been a long time since I've been here, but I have a few questions.
So you gotta give your name and address.
I forget my name, but I live at 198 Calipil Road, Joe Lozier. Sorry. Mary, how are you?
It's been a long time since you've been here, you can't remember that much.
Yeah, can't remember that far back. Couple things. I was in the post office the other day and this lady came up to me and yes, she thought I was still involved. And she was yelling and screaming because there was no water at the trailer park. And I'll call it a trailer park at Elgin Heights. I wanted to get it early to see when my picture was up there because I forget when I was here, when I was on the council. But at that point in time, we were told by the WPCA that, you know, we had to, we had to take that thing over because it was imperative because, you know, they needed water. They still don't have water. I guess that it's coming and it should be here relatively soon, but I guess I'm looking for a date. So I go to the post office every day to get my bills and this lady sees me there quite frequently. So, you know, I'd like to be able to tell her a date or maybe the council or somebody could tell her a date. I know that the council was running the WPCA, so they don't have too far to look to wonder why this hasn't been taken care of. Second thing, natural gas. As you all know, you're taking water at Elgin Heights, okay? It would be a great time for somebody to give, like, Norwich Utilities a call and talk to them about continuing the line off of 2A. It's down almost to the intersection there going up to...
Cedar Mill.
Cedar Mill, okay? I know that Yankee Gas has the, not the ability, but the, they have the right to take gas, so Norwich Utilities doesn't. So you have to work with Yankee Gas. Our governor says that he would like to put natural gas in as many places as he possibly can. So maybe he can help you. You know, maybe our new state senate representative could help you. But, you know, I don't know when they're gonna start the water lines in Elgin Heights, but I believe that they can go in the same trench. I'm not 100% sure about that, okay? But it's, you know, time is of the essence, but you could save those taxpayers a lot of money. And they'd be able to pay the water assessment by the amount of money they save. And also, let's face it, I mean, the town owns land there. You can put a fueling station there and switch our trucks over. So there's a lot of things you could do to save money. I know government likes to spend money, but there's some things that we should be able to do to save money. One more thing and then I'll go home. The city of Groton, I guess now, takes care of our water. Is this a money-saving situation or not? I like to sub out as many things as I possibly can, but if it costs us money, you know, it's not that good of a deal. I'd like to know, and I'm sure a lot of the residents would like to know, how much it's costing us. When I see all those brand-new trucks riding around with two or three men in them, you know, this is the city of Groton, I'm in our town, I know it's costing me money. And I'd like to know if we're saving money. And if they want our water, I was gonna say different more, but I'm not gonna say that, you know, let them have a sewage. You know, if they wanna, if they wanna take care of it, let them take care of it. Let them take care of both. I don't know if that's ever been looked at. Couple more things and I'll, I promise I'll leave. We're not using the well down the law office any longer. We got a deal on that. And maybe, well, it's not Mystic Gollig Water anymore. Every two or three years, they sell it so they can raise my water raise on Cow Hill, but that's another story. You know, maybe, maybe, I think it's Aquarius, what is it?
Aquarium.
Yeah, that's, that's, that story. And, you know, why not? Why keep something that I don't think we're gonna use? You know, we've been told for years that there's problems with that well. I never thought there was, but maybe, maybe, maybe somebody else would be interested in. Yeah, I'm not gonna hang around, but I'd like to have an answer to a couple of those questions if I could. And I appreciate your service. It's not easy sitting there sometimes, especially when it goes to 12:30, 1 o'clock in the morning, but I thank you for your service.
Thank you, and I think we can get some, all of those questions answered for you. Thank you. And we never gonna hit that today. Yes, sir.
Yes, name's Larry Hoperidge, 26 Hood Road, Stonegate Village. Before I begin, I'd like to pass out a package that would make this presentation go much faster and would inform some of the new members as to what's going on. I'm not here to ask the, ask any favors or ask any action, but just to inform you as to what's going on and the company, okay? So it was all very complete and it felt very fair. As those who know and those who don't know, Garden Homes applied to convert Stonegate Village into a affordable housing development and the elimination of 55 age restriction. Residents were very pleased with the vote, which approved Stonegate Village into a affordable housing development, but retained the age restriction. What we can understand, if you go to page two, is the notice we had gotten earlier from Garden Homes management, which I turned out. Does Garden Homes need my consent as an owner to remove the age restriction? And two, does Garden Homes need the town's consent to remove the age restriction? And both cases suggest I can't understand why they filed it without getting our approval, but that's the nature of Garden Homes' operation. Return to second section. Garden Homes then went back to the zoning board and they wanted, they took the age-stated retired mobile home manufacturing community, which is Stonegate, and B, to take away from that and take the 22-site, all-age restricted mobile home manufacturing community called Ledger Commons, which makes the present Stonegate community center part of Ledger Commons. If you turn over the page, first of all, the vote approved the 22-note mobile home manufacturing home development with a 55 age restriction. You look at the site plan on the other, you will see Ledger Commons to your left. What they did is, if you notice A, that is where the community center, they actually, Garden Homes wants to make the community center part of Ledger Commons, which they cannot do according to our lease. Second, part of all the way, which is the entrance, becomes part of Ledger Commons. Then there is a road marked in red, which would have to be common share because Garden Homes wants that the area be, storage area, to be part of Ledger Commons. In effect, what it would be, would say, there's no more Stonegate Village because there's no way you can physically separate the two. Okay? Let's go to, I said this to you first. Let's go to the summary. Garden Homes filed a complaint with the Superior Court. Notice the vote was on page 26, paragraph 26, page five of complaint text, which David, well, he can read, David Trans, who said, removing the age restriction will increase the viability of the Stonegate Village. You get rid of age and you can sell more homes. Well, on the attachment, you know, well-recognized, there are successful age-restricted developers in Connecticut. My research focused on failed developments. In other words, he didn't look at local, successful age-restricted developments. And that is the only professional help that was quoted in the complaint. He had two others, but they failed so miserably, they didn't mention the complaint. Among the reasons why, and I listened, that we believe that limited the viability of the age restriction community, one knows, one we all know, there's the country. Second, Garden Homes president has stated that location, location, location has nothing to do with the sale of a house. The only thing that will sell houses, those houses are prices. And he built two houses, one was sold last, two model homes and they were never sold. One was eventually sold in August for someone who couldn't wait for the development for Presbyterian Church. The other one they had to rent because they couldn't do it. Every house that was bought was far above the very inexpensive house that they had built as a, as the showhouse. Second, in the past year, in other words, this full year, they've done no advertising. They put a couple little, what I call notices in the paper. There's, it was known on-premise, notice that any towers posted over, any place posted, they get a hold of it, the real estate developer. And there's no model home. Now, anybody in my point, tell you, they can't sell a house that way. They are looking forward to saying, we can't sell houses, but they definitely are doing this, as far as we're concerned, deliberately. They sharpened self in his foot. They just do nothing and everything they do is wrong. And as far as location, even people who reported to them had advised them to stress the location. I mean, we are a great location and that was another stress. And then finally, the other day, they put a, bought in a house, single house, put a 312 roof pitch. And if you go through the last sheet on there, item B, now, this is the lease which they wrote on here. It's even more stringent and more detailed than the lease that their former TT, TTI had. A home garden community must be new, like H and D seal, that side and so forth, and a single roof with 512 pitches. Now, they said they got a permit, which I believe they did, but there was no, nothing on a permit, permit was stating what roof it is. We feel we're in for a strong battle with them. They're testing us by putting this one up and they know they have no legal grounds. Now, the, this is just for information, we're not asking for any help or anything because we know the limits and the dividing line between the different commissions. But this is just to keep you informed of what's going on. I moved here five years ago. I'll be 83 next month. I came here to live, enjoy life, and basically pass over. But I swear, I'll spend every day I have getting at these people and they can't get much out of me if they sue me. All this store money is in my wife's name. So I have nothing to lose on this and I guarantee you, if they don't come about, and I believe it's all part, and I know, you all know, it's all part of the president, who somehow, some way, never wants to lose. So, anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service on the zoning commission.
When I'm finished with that, I'll be pleading to come back. I miss being out with the boys. It's the only time I get out.
I'm still on the left, I remember the lives at the Ledger Town Center.
That's good.
And we have the resident property owners wish to speak at this time. Hearing committee, commission, or board reports. Comments of town councillors.
I'd just like to commend Linda for her handling of the events during the hurricane. I think she did a fantastic job of disseminating information to the residents, keeping everybody informed and, and holding down the fort very admirably during the mayor's absence. Thank you.
The mayor's dreadedness.
Yes.
He was supposed to be there most part of that time.
Tomorrow is the last night of Notre Town. It will be held at DeHawks and Rec, Board of Ed building, and it will feature the Board of Ed and Hawks. So we hope that you come this 7 o'clock.
Any other council comments?
I have just a couple of items. I would like to just do a shout-out for Rich RuShiati, who is a coach of Ledger's soccer, Ledger Soccer Programs. He coordinated and sought donations of $10,000 for the installation of the two new lighted scoreboards for the boys' soccer program and the girls' soccer program. So thank him for his efforts. It's always such a pleasure to see how much we do rely and depend on our volunteers. As far as the event, as you called it, I would just like to, if I tried to thank people personally, I would, I would miss someone, so I'm not gonna do that. But I would like to say just a special thanks to the police and the emergency services personnel, our public works, who did a fine job, lots of rock stars in their midst. The staff, who, many of whom went well beyond their job descriptions. And then probably finally to the citizens, residents of Ledger, who sure stuck together and accomplished a lot. And also to our town councillors who came to volunteer in town hall during the storm. And then one other item I would like to mention, I'm surprised you didn't mention this, Bill. We found Shadow. Shadow was another dog that was missing for eight weeks, eight weeks. And Peter Mournau is the gentleman who ultimately caught, or I guess caught's the word, the dog by building a kind of a hutch up in the Highlands area. And he was able to, to capture him. You may have anything to add there, John?
They set up feeding stations so the dogs can go on the path. And based on the phone calls and Facebook hits, we can plot where the dog is going. And we set up a feeding, my wife set up a feeding station at one of these points, increasing the dog's comfort enough and gets tired enough and just stays there and then we walk up and get it. And Pete got this one.
It's interesting that you say that you plotted the dog's path by comments on Facebook, because that's exactly what we did during the hurricane. That's how we knew where the CL and P trucks were. Lots from CL and P.
That's how you caught him.
It was Facebook that did that. Anyway, okay, on to the approval minutes.
I make a motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes by 24.
Say it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Corrections provided? You call the roll?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Abstained.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Abstained.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dumbrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two abstentions?
Motion carries. Have a communications list. There are just two line referrals. Let's see, subcommittee liaison reports. Admin committee, Mr. Eichelberg.
Let's see, we made a number of appointments tonight, a couple of other items that are gonna show up later on. We did talk to, we did talk on, we did a number of, like, quite a bit of work on the light ordinance, we'll address that later as well. And again, most of what we talked about will be addressed later.
Any questions for admin? Community services?
Yeah, we met last week. I met with the LB's representatives, Jake Troy and Nick Bosom. Basically discussed where LB's is at right now and where they're heading in the near future. And the big topic of the evening was the, it's really come together as a union now versus services, between the two firehouses and the LB's. The relationship between the three companies has improved events been the past few months, both in the building and on the scenes. They're really working together quite nicely now. There's also during the storm, because you're getting together so well now, they're actually hanging out at the firehouse. There's two full groups available, so it cut down my response time if somebody is somewhere there hanging out. There are open lines of communication between the chiefs and the LB's, that's helping out everywhere. They also, they have mutual aid agreements for our surrounding towns in the area. And Mystic River has actually moved them up on the call list based on their performance. They want our guys to respond before someone else does because the performance and overall, I hate to say attitude, but business, performance, stick with performance, has improved so much that Mystic River wants them to respond first before anyone else. So they bumped it up, so that's a plus for us. They're hanging out in the building more, they're staying around with the group they've made, they just wanna be there and they're doing their paperwork on time now, getting their reports in on time. We're losing less calls and mutual aid, that's a good thing also. We worked out that there was a part-time opening in the LB's. Jacob Floyd would call us, people want to be part of that organization. They could still use more if anyone was interested, eight things are up. He realizes you want help. And that's my report.
Any questions for community services?
On that session, I just wanna add a comment to that. There was actually a motor vehicle accident at Ledger Center, you know, in Ledger Center, 1724 team, Monday night. And I stopped to watch it because I love to see our volunteers at action. Gales Ferry was there, Ledger was there, LB's was there. What a great job they do. If you ever come upon something, you just, I stayed way up to the side. Of course, the policeman came over and asked if I witnessed the accident because they were trying to find witnesses, but they did a phenomenal job. And considering it was 5:15 at night, when people are trying to drive through this intersection and you've got police in the road and you've got firemen in the road and the fire police directing, they almost lost a couple of fire police a couple of times because these people direct them, they're really crazy and they don't see them. Professionalism is phenomenal. And I can attest to, they really worked well together. Ledger was there, Gales Ferry, there was more trucks, you had no idea we owned this many trucks. They're all in the center of town. It was really a great thing to watch and they really are working well together.
Yeah, oh, one more thing, they are losing their grip on Fund 24, which is a fund they have for the ambulance that they generate. And they're talking about producing more medical equipment for our fire companies and using that money to purchase the striker. I think they would know that that grabs this in the pole.
Yeah, the stretchers, yeah.
Right, begun by two of these systems that in the future are gonna be pretty much standard issue on ambulances. Basically, it's a system that will grab the stretcher and load it for them. And so it's a lot safer than what it may anyway for both the patient and the ambulance drivers. Because of going with this agreement, we saved, I think, $5,000 per unit. We're buying two of them.
Any other questions for community services? Finance?
Other than what's on the agenda tonight, one topic to look up is continuing rollout of the municipal national software. As most heard, we did roll out the expense side of the municipal software management and funding of the town in July and payroll side of it rolling out in January. And in preparation for that, they'll be running parallel payrolls for Board of Ed and town employees with municipal to validate the data that's gonna enter. So when January comes by, we'll have the paycheck not go out when you have upset town employees. So it's a good thing, we'll have several payrolls to validate the data before we go live.
The only other thing that came out of that meeting is our audit. We are extending our audit. And I, and Marshall didn't say why, but I suspect it is this municipal rollout because it is taking a lot more time and energy on Marshall's part as well as on Nancy's, trying to get into this program. It's a little bit more complicated than they thought it was gonna be getting up and running, but they're both confident that when it's up and running, they're gonna like it. It's just getting there.
Any other questions for finance? Information technology, Mr. Song.
Information technology met on November 6th, right after the storm. And we took advantage of being right after the storm to invite Lieutenant Finkelstein to come and speak with us about lessons learned from use of technology during the storm. So this is where I was gonna post my little pitch for Facebook. Livo and, Livo and Livo, Shadow and DAX. So in Ledger, there is, there are a number of uses of Facebook. There is also an emergency alert system called Everbridge, which you can sign up for by going to the Ledger Town website. And we're really trying to get that word out. But then there are also people who just don't have electronic communications. So we're trying to do a better job of getting the word out, especially in emergencies, to all the people in all the ways we can. So the first thing that Lieutenant Finkelstein said in lessons learned... So, the first thing that Lieutenant Finkelstein said in lessons learned was, social media was a huge help in getting the word out to more people during the storm. And that's where we were, we were hearing about CL and P trucks, who had power and who didn't, where roads were closed. The town was sending out bulletins on Leger News, it was posting them on Leger's website, and it was also sending them out to the Leger Gales Ferry Community Forum on Facebook. So people knew where roads were closed, they knew where trees were down, they knew who had power and who didn't.
Where to get water?
Where to get water. And towards the end of the week, the Town Hall was publishing these, not only where to get water, but where to take showers, where to get meals, where you could stay overnight. It was really a great boost of technology. The thing that I really want to stress is to people, is to make sure that you sign up for Everbridge on the Town website. That sends emergency alerts to your cell phone, your home phone, your email it'll text you. Any, you're in control, you decide what numbers to get, give it, and how you're going to get your messages. One of the things we learned was that if a household signed up for Everbridge with one account, and there were two people in the house, for example, and each has a cell phone, it would call the first cell phone that you list. And if you said, "Okay, I got my message," it's not going to call the second one. So every resident should sign up for Everbridge if you want to get these emergency alerts. Secondly, you should have your relatives outside of town sign up for them, so they know what's going on in town. Because during a storm, sometimes we're not getting all the alerts, but you want your relatives to know, they want to hear from you, it's a good way to get news to them about what's going on in town. Couple other points, I want to second Counselor Allen's comments about what a great job Chairman Davis did as the acting mayor. Also, mayoral assistant Mark Bancroft was noted by Lieutenant Finkelstein. And I wanted to comment on a number of people, which have already been mentioned by Chairman Davis. It really was a great exercise for the town. Couple other things that I won't go into, I published a really long list in the report, so the report is online, if you go to Leger's website, you can see the rest of the lessons that we learned from this use of technology. It was a small expense to the town, and I'm really greatly forward in getting the word out to them. So, thank you.
Any questions for IT? I would just add that as far as Everbridge, before the storm, we were, I believe, just under 500 users, maybe 500 users. And as the storm approached and we started to get the word out through social media, we were, I believe, at over 1,000.
Yeah, over 1,000.
By the time we ended. So, certainly a good resource for a small amount of money. Okay, let's see. Leon Juice and Public Works Committee, Kevin?
We also met last week. We have a couple of items on the agenda to recommend the council accept a couple of roads into the town road inventory, and also open space to be added in. That's all I have.
Any questions for Leon Juice? Board of Education Liaison, Gerald.
Yes, if I could bend your ear for a few minutes, because there were actually two meetings last week. And so I'll start with, I'll start with one comment regarding, the Board of Ed is also working with the same financial software that the town is. They have, they have begun testing it, and they are, at this point, saying that they're prepared to start using it as of January 2013. So, that dovetails into Counselor France's comment on the software. The school-wide asbestos removal is in the final phase this coming summer. So it's been a five-year project, and this is the last summer of year five. So things are going well, and they're under budget on that. Leger High School was awarded the Michael's Cup for the class Double M, which is fantastic news for them. It's a, it's a nice award to receive, and it's based on, it's not just based on wins and losses on the field, or on the field of play, it's based on sportsmanship, participation, which Leger High School is at 54% of their student athletes participating in sport, which is well above the other area towns. Classroom achievement, drug-free athletes, and then finally, success on the field. Let's see. Educationally, the AP class enrollments are really going up. That program's actually doubled their enrollment in the last two years. So kids are really taking advantage of that. A number of students taking PSATs almost doubled as well from 2010 to 2012. They're still working on how to recover the five lost hurricane days, they did get one back on Election Day. So they're, they're down to four, they're working on that.
Was it open that one, too?
No, they, they, no, they faced some pushback on that one. So they're looking at a couple of their different options, and they should by the next meeting know what, what days they're going to finalize to get that in, but it doesn't look like they're going to be tapping into February, April vacations, which is good. The second item was an informational meeting, one of probably three or four informational meetings regarding the renovations of the Leger Middle School. There are a couple plans that are available, and if residents want to see them before they attend one of these meetings, and I urge everybody to attend these meetings, it's really important to, you know, be an informed voter, because this will be something that you see. But on Leger Patch, they have the different proposed plans, and you can, you can download them as PDFs and print them, and it's great. But I did attend that, went through the Leger Middle School, the school that I went to, and saw the needs that exist there. And the plans are pretty, pretty impressive. There's a couple different variations. One of them does include a town emergency shelter, which I think is probably a big need. So unfortunately, it was very poorly attended by the citizens. So the residents of Leger, they need to get the word out that these informational meetings are happening, they're at the Leger Middle School, and it's something that will be come up soon. That's it.
Any questions for our Board of Ed? Other liaisons?
I have a WPCA report. WPCA has not met since the last Town Council meeting, but I did want to report on a sewer plant incident that happened during the storm. Again, through quick action by a number of people pitching in, we eroded a larger problem. When the power went out to the sewer station in the Highlands, which is called the wastewater treatment plant, when the power went out, the generator failed to start, and therefore the pumps couldn't run, so there was a risk of sewage backing up into homes on that system. And through the quick action of the mayor, Steve Banks was the WPCA supervisor, his assistant Wrigley, and WPCA Chair Jim Diaz, actually went to the plant that night. They managed to get the generator started after several hours. And also, to prevent, in that period, to prevent sewage from backing up, they used the Everbridge system to notify just the residents in the Highlands and ask them not to flush, which takes pressure off the system. And as a result, which you do in a situation like that, all towns do this, when, when the system fails, they have to dump the overflow of untreated sewage directly into the water race, which we never want to do. But that does happen quite frequently in large storms. In this case, we released 20,000 gallons, which is approximately the size of a home swimming pool, which in the grand picture is a very small quantity of water. Other towns were dumping sewage throughout, you know, for days, all sewage. So I just wanted to point again, great work by the town employees and the volunteers, and grateful for the use of the Everbridge system. Good news is, there was no damage to the generator, it had some dust in the contacts, they figured that out. And so these contacts are what tripped the generator to start it when there's a power failure. So that will now be put as a step into making this plan. It's in good shape, there's no damage to it, so that's a well-run plan, and I pull ahead. Thank you.
Any questions for WPCA? And you will help get some answers to Mr. Lozier, I'm sure many of those questions you can answer.
Yes, I think the mayor is going to come, because he's been asking.
About the trailer, it's all the correspondence as well. He has some other questions, though, in regards to office and things like that.
Yes, absolutely.
Report of the mayor?
I got a report. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Pension board met this morning. Unfortunately, they didn't have a forum. That's becoming a bit of a problem, they don't have enough members, we're short one member, we're still looking for someone. But we had the actuarial evaluation report from Siegel, and I felt that we could get it just at the pension board, maybe we could come and get it to the rest of the council. And you have a copy of the report, if anybody would like to read the really exciting 35 pages of numbers. But the bottom line comes down to, we had a very good actuarial two years, the amount of need to put in the retirement is less than it was two years ago. The assets, planned assets are going up, and we just had a lot of positive things that happened, which I won't really go into, because some of them don't sound positive when you say them, but we actually had a good two-year report, evaluation report, is very good. It went, when it goes down, so the mayor's going to be happy when he goes through the budget, because the retirement plan can have less money to venture.
And perhaps we could, since we're having such successes with our social media, perhaps we could, could you kind of write up, like, qualifications for somebody that would serve on that board, maybe we can get the word out to Patch and some other places.
Yes, Rox and I can put that together, because I'm not sure what position is the one that's left, but.
Okay, thank you. Report of the mayor?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to add my appreciation for the hard work that was done in my absence at the, at the end, after the storm. I know, as Chairman Davis said, we don't want to be a pension individual, but I would like to mention some, you know, specific people. First of all, Deputy Mayor, Chairman Davis, my assistant, town councilors who pitched in, of course, all of our emergency services, police, fire, ambulance, dispatch, our administrator of emergency services, I'll mention his name, because he's here. Our Public Works and police in getting the roads open and clear. MIS, again, I think was something that really, really helped a lot, a lot. Our Town Hall staff, and then some unusual ones, you know, our library. Because if the library did not lose power, they were able to continue to operate as a charging station. And I guess you'd call it a warming station. Usually it's a cooling station when you have a hurricane. So that is appreciated, and that was unusual. Of course, the schools and the staff of the schools, as they stepped up, a lot of people take showers there. I take great satisfaction in knowing that the system is bigger than any one person, meaning me. And all of the work that we did over the past 11 months with CL and P, with our staff, with our emergency services people, the hurricanes we went through, some of us found a little tedious at times. I think all of that really contributed to the fact that we were prepared, people knew what to do, and then people stepped up to some unusual things. You know, they say at the start of the war, the first thing that goes out the window is the battle plan, it was the same thing with the hurricane. And I know that you made it up as you went along in some cases, but it worked out well. Also, again, communication, there was two-way communication. Communication between the town and residents, and then between the residents and the town, many of whom fielded phone calls. I know as soon as I got back in the office, I started returning the phone calls and taking some. And, you know, what I found is our citizens are extremely resilient, extremely patient, and, you know, just to use an example of, just to prove a point, you know, if I was out of the office, I would get a rather, how should I call it, pointed message on my machine, you know, "Where are you? What are you doing?" and things like that. The minute you pick up the phone and you return that call, the people are like your best friend. And then when you turn the, when you, excuse me, when the power gets turned on, it's like, you know, they want to build a statue to you or something, you know. So people are, they just want to be communicated with. That being said, I will say that, you know, we did have some good, some successes, the Make Safe program that allowed us to open the roads. I would, I would direct your attention to yesterday's editorial in the New London Day. I think it summed up very succinctly what many of us feel about the response of CL and P. The interesting thing is, the reporter left a message for me, I never called him back, and I would have said many of the things that were in there, so it's interesting that others had the same response. I think CL and P did an as well a job, and I would say an excellent job, in restoring power and doing many of the things that they said they would. My biggest problem with them was communication. It's very, very frustrating when people are calling you every minute, asking you, you know, "When is my power going to be turned on?" And I realize you can't answer that question, but we want to work with them because they do have crews working, and, and I feel very strongly that they should be able to tell us on a particular circuit, the estimate. And I told them, six hours, 12 hours, three days. I believe if you can give people an estimate like that, they can plan their lives in that effect. And I think that's something that we're going to work with them on, once the, once the dust settles a little bit, and we have a chance to sit down calmly and communicate. I believe that that's something that, that we can do better. It was especially frustrating a week after the storm, when you had a handful of people. You know, you checked the site, there's five people who were without electricity, and you don't know who those five people are.
They did.
Yeah, they did. And again, their patience, they didn't call. You know, the people are out there, I went up to one street, the people had just come in from a swim, and, you know, with a pond, and running, and, you know, "What's the problem?" You know, I'm up there to see what's going on, it's like, oh, you know, yeah, somebody's got to be last. But again, it was, and then, and then Monday morning, again, there were some people who were out, had been out for a while, and, you know, I couldn't get, couldn't get a response as to when these people, who really, you know, were the longest. Again, I, I think, I think overall the town as well, we can always do better, and we're going to work on those areas. Just to echo what's been said about Everbridge, I was at the senior center today, I did encourage them to sign up, the director there is going to work with them. And also, you know, very, very important, when your electricity goes out, hey, you all remember this, because you really wanted electricity back, more than your parents did. If your electricity goes out at any time, you must call CL and P. If your entire neighborhood goes out, don't say, "Well, my neighborhood's out, so they know about me." They don't. And then when power is restored, if your home is not restored, you must call CL and P. So there's an 800 number, it's right on your phone, excuse me, on your electric bill, look at it, and if your power ever goes out in any circumstances, call CL and P immediately. I've had two visits from FEMA since the storm. One came in and actually started sitting down with their calculator and charts to start assessing the costs. What this one team was doing was trying to determine the magnitude of the losses in the state, to see if we could qualify for some type of special benefits. So that was encouraging. And then today, three folks showed up in my office from FEMA. One from Arkansas, one from Kentucky, and one from Idaho. Just, "How we doing? What can we do for you? Point of contact." So there's a lot of focus here, but I'm optimistic about that, because that means there's probably a very good chance that we can recover many of the costs that, you know, that we, that we incurred. And they, and they were very encouraging by saying, you know, "Don't put any cost beyond, you know, your imagination." They said, you know, "The red caution cones you put out on the road, one time put them on, they got blown away, you know, put them on your list, you need new, you need new red cones." So we need to be very, very creative, I mean, as early as possible, recover our costs. Algen Heights Water Project is moving along very, very well. Basically, Avery Hill Road is complete, the line runs from Avery Hill Road down Tucker's Run, and also to the tank. And they have run, it's either 400 or 700 feet on Michael Lane. Now, that is in Algen Heights. So this is well beyond anything we expected, as far as what they're doing there. So we're very pleased with that. Avery Hill Pumping Station, I'm not as pleased with, and I'm, I'm, I'm getting a little frustrated, and I hope, I appreciate Council Sound's support of this. It seems to me that we need to be able to do better with these individuals, right? I know the individual that Mr. Lozier was talking about, and she called me, and when I see her number, I'm just not going to answer the phone. I just, you know, it's very frustrating when people call you, and you can't give them an answer. And the answer that I do have, I wouldn't dare tell her about when we're going to get that pumping station along. So we really need to work hard to make sure we're tracking what the next step is in that process. Finally, I thought it was going to be mentioned, many people have asked a question about Groton Utilities. Why don't we have Groton Utilities? If we had Groton Utilities, our lives would have been on the next day. You have to put that in perspective. Groton Utilities services a very specialized and limited community. Grotton Utilities services a very specialized and limited community. It's very controlled and it's very manageable. I saw the mayor of the city of Grotton today and I talked to her about it. She didn't rule it out, but, you know, you don't want to take on more than you can successfully manage if you have a very successful system. The last thing you want to do is expand to the point where now, you know, you're, you're over your head. So, you know, I certainly have not ruled it out. I will caution you, however, we all remember the experience that we had with Thames Valley communication and cable. You know, came up into town a certain way, a certain amount, they cherry picked and that's it. So, you know, you don't want a situation like ours, something like that. But I do have the door open. I'm certainly open to discussions and I speak with her often and I will consider those discussions. And that's my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the mayor? I just wanted to ask a question that Mr. Lozier asked. Have we considered putting gas in Algen Heights? I've never even thought of that. Has, had anybody thought of it?
We have had discussions about the extension of gas lines and really, and I think Mr. Lozier alluded to the property we own up there, which is the Clark Park. There are actually two gas lines that come within a certain distance of the Clark Park. That would be very, very attractive if we could bring gas to that location. Some of the other neighborhoods, it's certainly something to look at. I know there are people here, businesses here in town that would love to have gas right out of there.
But I mean, with Algen Heights right now, I know, I don't know that you can put the gas line in the water line hole, but we're going to cave it after all the water lines are in. So if we were going to do gas, now would be the time to do it.
The problem is that you'd have to get that project authorized and approved. I will tell you this, that I will pursue any grants because the state is pushing this. So I will, you know, I will speak with our staff to see if there's money there. You know, maybe just extending that line, you know, some distance, we could get some benefit out of that. So I will certainly look into that.
Doesn't the gas company you paid for the pipes in?
Okay, that's something we need to look at.
What they did for that missile, they just made us pay for the.
I guess the question is, you know, you referred to bringing it down Avery Hill Road or Algen Heights. You're talking about, you know, was the question to bring it into Algen Heights or bring it down Avery Hill Road?
No, I think his comment was to bring it into Algen Heights because you've got a lot of homes there and it would save them some money. And if we're already going to tear up the road, it would seem the time to do it is now. And if we can, you know, and.
Sure.
It's right there and it's not, we're going to cave it when we're done. So if we had to dig it up, if it had to be dug up again for a gas line, now's the time to dig it up.
I agree. Keep in mind, there is an investment required by the homeowner if they have to convert.
If they choose to, yes.
So it's something that we've had discussions about and we're aware of the gas lines there. And we understand, you know, Galesbury is very successful in terms of the use of.
Well, you didn't answer the question and I knew there was probably more to it, so I wanted to get that question answered from Mr. Lozier while we were here. Because I figured that, I didn't think that it'd gone over everybody's head. Not that I had thought about it, but, you know, I think somebody had.
Mr. Marshall.
I just want to add on something that the mayor touched on briefly. When the power goes out, if something in your house was on, do you think of going around and turning it off, especially if you're using the stove? If your house is like mine, when you're not using the stove as part of the countertop, you throw mail or whatever on there. We had a house fire, I don't know if it's in Galesbury or Leger. The people did just that. The stove was on, the power went out and the five days that the power's gone, the stove became a countertop. Power came back on, the mail caught fire. They were able to save the house, they didn't lose much, wasn't much damage. But just something to keep in the back of your mind, if your stove was on, just double check, be sure it's off before power comes back on again.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. Hold business. Admin, are we going to move on the light ordinance?
We are not. I want to make a motion to take this off of the agenda. We made a number of significant changes tonight that I'd be willing to go back to public hearing.
Okay. So we just, sorry, is that the procedure? Do we just take it off? Are we about to take it off?
You can just take it off.
Take it off, thank you. Pardon me? No, they're not ready to set the public hearing yet, so that'll come back to us.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion to change the.
Mending the agenda.
Hearing non-consent calendar.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Do you want to add an item to cancel the next meeting? That would be, you didn't amend for that, but you only want to add an item to do that?
We could. So let's, the motion carries on the consent cal, consent calendar. Would anybody like to make a motion to cancel our next meeting?
I would like to make that motion to cancel the December 28th, December, November 28th meeting.
I did ask if finance had anything.
And I talked to, I talked to Marshall today and she said no.
Did not, so.
And nobody else will be meeting between now and now?
At this point, at this time, we're amending the agenda to add the motion to be item number.
Probably 14 and then you need 14 down to 15.
Okay, item number 14. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France? Nine in favor, zero opposed.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Kenneth Gear affiliated of 23 Thomas Road, Leger, as an alternate member to the Historic District Commission for a five-year term ending December 4th, 2016, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Ryan.
Motion's been made. Seconded, any discussion?
I'd just like to comment that Mr. Ken Gear is very active in the preservation of the Gear Hills School, very interested in history, does a lot of work for the town. And he will be a great addition to the Historic District.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
I make a motion to approve the proposed assistant to the director of Parks and Recreation job description as contained in the draft dated November 9, 2012.
Second. Motion has been made. Seconded, any discussion?
Are these new jobs or just rewrites?
They are rewrites, but they are upgrades. So they do contain new job responsibilities. They are existing positions, but the job description has been upgraded.
To reflect what they really do?
To reflect what they really do, yes.
Any increase in sounds?
Chairman finance? Let's go to finance.
Yes.
We'll get it next, yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
I would just like to add a little background that I don't think all councilors are aware of. There's been a history of a number of job descriptions that due to miscommunication, the union tried to negotiate the job description in the bargaining process and that's not the proper form. So they actually lost a number of years where they had the opportunity to catch these job descriptions up to reflect the actual duties of the job. So they have finally gone through the process and thank you for having for hearing.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
Motion to approve the proposed assistant to the supervisor of public health nursing job description as contained in the draft dated November 9, 2012.
Second. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. We're moving on to finance committee items, agenda item number eight.
Make a motion to appoint permanent municipal building committee as the building committee for the Board of Education's especial removal and floor replacement project for Leger High School during fiscal year 2013-2014. In addition, authorize the Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject the grant for the especial removal and floor replacement project at Leger High School. And authorize the Board of Education to prepare the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the especial removal and floor replacement project at Leger High School and authorize funding for this project through CNR fund account 21070101, Jack 58255 in the amount of greater than $300,000.
Second. Discussion, please.
Summary, it follows on the council. Now, it's common that this is the fifth year of a five-year budget for special removal of the schools. This is the final installment of $300,000 for the.
Any questions, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Any questions, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
Motion to appropriate the additional $395 for Voag student received in grant funding per Public Act 12-116, increasing the Voag grant appropriation for fiscal year 2012-2013. The Board of Education capital and our current account to be used only for the Voag program.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
There was plenty of discussion. The, when this initially proposed, there was, there was question what the act said and what the money could be used for, whether it had to be used for the Voag program specifically or whether it could be.
Benefit.
Benefit the students within the Voag program. As an example, it proposed, our current goal is to buy psychology books that would be used by the Voag students. When Bill Merrill came into the next meeting, he had also done his side of the research and said, no, it had to be used for essentially a capital purchase or something that was directly related to the Voag program, which they have a long list of items in the, so the money will be used this year for a one-time purchase, not recurring cost. And then it will come in next year as, in the budget process and then come into the budget appropriate.
This year, we had already done our budget, it was already approved. And we did not want to, we weren't even sure how we could appropriate the money to the school board to use it. So it was the finance committee's discussion, we asked them to use it for capital one-time purchases because this is your one time, you're going to receive this, not inside the budget. So why not let Voag use it for the things that they always have told, there isn't enough money to buy? You know, it's a one-time, you know, it's like the unexpected present you got, should use it for something that would really benefit the program and then they all seemed to do that.
Any other questions, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambroski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, number.
I, I say yes, too.
Oh, I see. Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Briefly, the, we discussed with Wilson Shaw, Minister of Public Services, over several meetings about purchasing the next major piece of fire department, how to budget for them. In this case, the amount of money in the capital account is about, is $46,500 short that we need to make the payment. When they make the order, the payment will be due in the following fiscal year, so we could appropriate it then in the following budget. The hope and the discussion of both the mayor and the finance committees that the current budget year would have the cost avoidance or money that was not expended to have them available to us in the current budget.
Didn't the mayor get a TSF? I remember that was on the record.
I would have to play, I would have to play the tape back. I would have to play the tape back, but I do recall something like that.
This, this fire truck will be replacing two fire trucks.
Right.
And Mr. Shaw did a big spreadsheet of how far out in funding we need to buy trucks in the future. And this truck is kind of being bought ahead of that schedule. So if we don't use the $46,000 in this year, we already have to bump next year's amount up. It's really going to make a big difference in next year's budget. So the hope is to find the money in this year's budget, but in any case, we need a fire truck.
And then the replacement of the two, the R11 tanker and the other one will be surplus and sold.
One is going into reserve.
No, I don't want it to be reserved anymore.
We'll keep that in service, but at the point where that one gets out of service, this pumper is actually going to have a cap system and we think that's going to allow us to start reducing the fleet. So, we'd only be running one tanker in town versus two tankers. If that fails, we'd be buying a small tanker to replace it. If this succeeds like we expect, then we may be purchasing a small pumper to get back into the flag lots. Eventually, we want to go from 10 pieces of apparatus down to eight pieces of apparatus. Currently, each station has two pumpers. If we go down to a one pumper, one tanker type of situation, we'll need one engine company that's available to put in either department when one's down for no cans.
Now, 11, that's out of service now. Is there any hope that we can sell that?
We're trying, we put out for bids on that. We had a $7,500 minimum and the bid that came in was for $2,500.
That's the question.
With a damaged frame, it kind of makes it difficult to sell the vehicle in that condition. You'd have to be selling it for off-road juice.
If it's pulled out of service because it's dangerous. So, no way to do that.
Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Items under land use and planning, number 11.
Motion to accept the conveyance of open space set aside identified on the Bitter Street subdivision map 25, block 120, lot 85, 85 Avery Hill Road, in accordance with subdivision regulations to be open space requirements.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments?
Just basically, just to follow up for, planning commission has already approved acceptance of the open space per their subdivision regulations. The deed's already been, that would be allocated to the town for, for use. It is contingent with other open space, so it's continuous with the other existing open space that is now that the town has. And this is merely just a regulatory thing for the town to accept land.
Doesn't it come onto Avery Hill Road?
Yes, it does come onto Avery Hill Road.
So, it allows people to go from Avery Hill Road up into all the open space up there?
All the open space up there, correct.
Great for, yeah, it's great for the residents.
Any other questions, comments? Roxanne, the roll, please.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item number, Agenda Item Number 12.
Motion to accept Abbey Road, Lucian Way and the extension of Bitter Sweet Drive into the town road inventory in accordance with ordinance number 45, and ordinance amending and ordinance regulation regulating of an addition of any new street or highway to the highway system of the town of Leger.
Second.
Yeah, I was going to say Abbey Road's spelled wrong and then motion is spelled right below.
Yeah. The history behind this is that we have probably been maintaining these three roads for the last couple of years per Steve Madlin, but we are not, since it's not listed as part of the town road inventory, we don't get the matching state grant for, from the state to help pay for this. So, that's the reason why.
Well, Bitter Sweet wasn't, that's, we haven't been maintaining that, but the other two.
The other two have, yes. But this is all a recommendation of Steve Madlin.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. At this time, I want to entertain a motion to cancel the second meeting in November.
Still moved, 11:28.
Second. Any discussion, complaints? Nope, I didn't think I'd hear any. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Just quickly, does anybody have any items they would like to add to our capital wish list? That seems to be our topic. Yes?
I actually have one. After the storm, I had been approached by George up at the senior housing and they had issues when they lost power during the storm. Apparently, they did not lose power up there, but something tripped in the green transformer box out at the street and nobody knew it, particularly. But one of the things that they request is that as part of the senior housing, at least in the main building, maybe have the generator up there so that the seniors up in that area can have a warm location to go to right nearby. So, maybe a generator at the senior housing might be something added to the capital list.
Having served as your mayor, in the next six days, I will tell you that there were many people in many forms of public, of the town of Leger who are now asking for generators, the libraries, the senior center. So, generators is certainly an item that we can, Roxanne, if you would just add that on to our list and in some cases, we'll have a discussion on that. Another item that was storm-related, since we talked about storm-related, you know the really nice sign we had up in Leger Center, the one that said showers available? The interesting thing about that sign is because it's so old, it has to be programmed with the computer at the sign. So, anytime you wanted, they needed to change the words, somebody had to, with a laptop, go up there and change it. So, that item also came up as a.
Smoke controller?
A, well, the, the new signs were much faster than that and Sergeant Gilman mentioned